Good evening, and welcome everybody to the May 6th, 2019 special meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Item A on our agenda this evening, Madam Secretary, Corvus President.
Yes.
Very good. Moving to item B this evening, council membership items, receive presentation of qualifications from interested applicants. It says my name on it. So I'm going to read some comments. We're here this evening to appoint and place one of the Jersey Village City Council. So I've got some comments I want to read to everybody tonight about the process and how we're going to go through the application process. And then if there's any comments or questions from members of council, we'll entertain those questions and we'll move forward with the applications. So this agenda item is for the appointment to fill place one in the Jersey Village City Council. Councilmember Mitchum, who currently serves in place one, submitted his application for a place on the May 4th, 2019 ballot as mayor. Councilmember Mitchum ran and opposed and subsequently prevailed in the election conducted on May 4th. Once councilmember Mitchum takes oath of mayor on May 13th, 2019, he will automatically resign his position as councilmember place one, creating a vacancy on city council. The city charter provides that vacancies on the council arising from any cause shall be filled by a vote of the council. Additionally, the city charter, section 2.03, also provides that a council position filled by appointment shall be filled by election and at the next city general election. On March 18th, 2019, city council directed staff to post notice in the April issue of the JV Star on the city website and on the social media pages, seeking applicants interested in being appointed to the vacant councilmember position place one until the next general election. In the notice, applicants were asked to file an application for the position with the city secretary by 12:00 PM on May 1st, 2019. They were also invited to attend the May 6th, 2019 special city council meeting in order to deliver a three to five-minute presentation concerning their qualifications for office and to give an explanation outlining their desire to hold office. The notice has followed up with a formal letter to each candidate that filed an application reminding them that the May 6th, 2019, meeting in time. So tonight, city council will hear from applicants desiring appointments to fill the vacancy on city council position one. Presentations will be given by the applicants in the order in which their applications were received by the city secretary's office. Tonight's proceedings will be the following. I'll begin the process by a roll call of the applicants to ensure they're all present. Each applicant will be given five minutes for a presentation to city council. City council members will be given two minutes per applicant for any questions and answers. Upon completion of the presentations and the question and answer sessions, council may retire to an executive session to deliberate and discuss the presentations. Upon returning from executive session, or if no executive session was had, I will call item F1 on the agenda. In determining the appointment, council will deliberate and conduct a roll call vote at that time. Each member of the city council will have an opportunity to vote for any one of the applicants who made a presentation. If any one of the applicants receives three or four votes, then no additional vote is necessary. I will vote to break a 2-2-0 tie and no additional voting is necessary. In a 2-2-1 or a 2-1-1-1 vote situation, the applicants will each be given an answer from prepared questions approved by council. The questions will be in a round robin format, so each applicant will be the first answer to answer one of the questions. There will be a second roll call vote of council for the three of the remaining applicants. If an applicant receives three or four votes, then no additional vote is necessary. I will break a 2-2-0 tie and no additional voting is necessary. If the second roll call vote does not result in an applicant receiving a majority, council will vote to eliminate all but two applicants by a third roll call vote. Council will then have a fourth roll call vote in which the applicant will be appointed. Once an applicant is appointed, council must formalize the appointment. This will be accomplished by making a motion with a second and a vote on the resolution. The applicant receiving the appointment will be given the oath of office and sworn in at the next regular city council meeting on May 13th, 2019. Does any member of council have any questions or requests regarding this process? So I will now begin the roll call of applicants. Please acknowledge that you are here. Nora Hahn, thank you. Robert Ottman, thank you. Judy Tidwell, thank you. Simon Hughes, thank you. Michael Stenbridge, thank you. Michael Drew Wasson, thank you. Joe Pennington, thank you everybody for your applications and your desire to serve our community. At this time, I will now call our first applicant to deliver the presentation that we, Nora Hahn. Nora?
Do I stand here and present to you? Okay, great. Well, first of all, good evening. My name is Nora Hahn, and I've lived in Jersey Village for 15 years. My husband, Richard, and I have two children. They're both in college. Our daughter lives with us at home. She goes to Lone Star. And our son is a freshman at Howard Payne University. We live on Hanley Street over near the golf course, and we're happy to call Jersey Village our home. I have offered to serve as an interim city council member because I was inspired by one of our newest members of Congress recently, who I heard quoted as saying, "My goal is to see where and how I can do the most good." And that encouraged me to see what I can do to ensure that our community is safe and secure, is vibrant, diverse, inclusive, progressive, and optimistic. I believe that by offering my time to serve as a city council member, I can use my experience to do good and to help make Jersey Village a great home for other people to call home. A little bit about myself, I'm not a native Texan, but as the saying goes, I got here as fast as I could. I was born in Tampa, Florida, to Joe and Lynn Rice. We moved to Houston so that my father could teach at Houston Baptist University. He went on to teach at the University of Houston for almost 40 years, and my mother was an elementary music teacher for almost 20 years. I figured that I was an official Texan when I fell in love with football, Blue Bell, and queso. I grew up in Manville, Texas, just a few steps away from where my great-grandmother ran a boarding house during the Great Depression. I graduated from Alvin High School and then went on to attend the University of Texas at Austin. I received a Bachelor of Journalism degree, and I worked for Compact Computer Corporation and then subsequently Hewlett-Packard for almost 24 years. Over the last seven years, I've worked for a company called SunGuard Availability Services. We use technology to keep companies all over the world and their businesses safe and resilient. On a personal level, as I said, I'm a wife and a mom, professional public relations manager, musician, a writer, a weekend athlete. You may have seen me running, or swimming, or biking around Jersey Village. I do marathons and half marathons and triathlons in my spare time. As for experience, it's mostly working in committee positions with several nonprofits. I'm currently a member of the Music Committee at my church, Tallowood Baptist Church. I'm also a member of the Play Reading Committee at Stage Works Theater. It's a local community theater nearby. I also helped Stage Works develop and employ an intern training program to equip their staff on child safety. I've also volunteered in the past with the American Heart Association and the American Cancer Society and MD Anderson Hospital. Politically, I believe that our leaders should bring integrity, honesty, justice, diligence, objectivity, teamwork, compassion, and trustworthiness to their duties. I try to remain positive and balanced in my points of view. I give the issues a fair assessment in any way that I can. But at my core, I believe in the same things stated in the preamble of the Constitution: peace, justice, security, well-being, and the blessings of liberty for all. In terms of things I would focus on for Jersey Village, I'm most concerned about safety and security, flood risk management, economic development, fair taxation, infrastructure improvement, community involvement, and civic beautification. I've had the privilege to be a part of the fabric of Jersey Village for many years, as a homeowner who takes pride in my home and my neighborhood and community, as a parent whose kids grew up here and made lifelong friends, as a resident who helps my fellow homeowners after storms and floods, as a jogger who has pounded the pavement from one end of JV to the other, as a citizen who respects the rights and the views and beliefs of others, and as a consumer who supports our local businesses, and finally, as a neighbor who cares about my fellow villagers. Now I'd like to step up to do what I can to support our community as a public servant. I want to thank the city council for welcoming me to this process and for lending your support. In closing, I just want to say that I believe that making a positive impact on the world begins at home. And for me, that home is Jersey Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Does any council members have any questions for Nora? Thank you very much, Nora.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me today here, first of all. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to fill this position. And so I know I've met a few of y'all, but I have not been able to meet every single one of y'all here, so I wanted to give you a little background of me. I was born and raised here in Jersey Village, grew up here, left for a short four years to go to A&amp;M, where I got my Bachelor of Science in Meteorology for four years, and I decided to move back here and actually make Jersey Village my permanent home. I loved living here. It's been a passion mine to be here. It's a great community, and I would have nothing else but to be here. And so the past five years of actually being a homeowner here, I've decided that it is time to join this community and kind of get involved to what I can see it being and foreseeing to. I've started a family, have a wife and two kids here, and you know, our passion is for them to grow and be here just like what we did. We both grew up here in Jersey Village, and we want to see them grow and prosper just like us. And so one of my great passions is to see that happen with them and see them prosper in what this growing Jersey Village City is. And so with also my background, I went back to A&amp;M and got a master's in business to kind of broaden my horizon since, I don't know if y'all know about meteorology too much, but it's very science and math-driven. And so to broaden my experience and horizon of knowledge I have, I went back to gain this expertise of what'd be helpful into any type of business or money management type of situation and then kind of seen to unfold. And so with that information or skills and knowledge that I gained, there's a few things I can see with the city that we've already proposed and that we want to grow and build our city on. And you know, the first one obviously is crime and safety in our community. How can we continue to develop that, make our JV PD, our JV Fire Department even better and stronger and keep them watch over this community? As you know, having little ones, that's a huge priority for us, making sure they are safe constantly and always. One of my other reliefs, or my main focuses is to give you that flood control. Yes, I was a part of the 2001 Allison flooding and then Tax Day flooding, you know. Both those affected us and my family. We did make it through, but trying to see those plans out and getting that pushed to foresee for Jersey Village to make it kind of more of an attractive place and make people want to move here and not just be known as Jersey Village to place up floods. That one's true to heart to me just because I've been affected by it so many times. I love to see and push that motion forward and continuing to get that flood mitigation brought to Jersey Village and the funding that we need. The other one is a new city hall. We've all been here for how long? It's kind of outdated a little bit. There's probably some mold in this building we don't know about. And you know, getting a new city hall and a new location, better build, is a strong goal of mine as well, to see something prosper out of this. If you look at neighboring communities around here, all of them have a fantastic kind of city center-esque place to go to and be at, and what that kind of draws people's attention to it. And so helping fund that and go forward and pushing that along to try to bring that to Jersey Village to make it more attractive is another goal and passion of mine. And also with that, I worked here in Jersey Village, actually in the city, for a company called Thorn Tree for five years. And seeing how the businesses haven't really come that quickly to our area, I would love to try to push to get new businesses to have new economic growth here in this city as well. What I've kind of touched on in all these is trying to make JV more attractive to people, to incoming people. My one hope is that we can, you know, develop this city to where young and older couples see Jersey Village as a great place to move. You know, why do people move into, say, Memorial or Heights? You know, there's attractive places that all age groups go to. Why is that not for JV? Why is that not a statement? My goal is to kind of help with that, to grow and prosper this neighborhood where I was born and raised, and to make it a better place for me and my family as they grow here as well. And so my vision of why I applied for this is because I am, I do have this deep investment into this neighborhood, into the city. I've been here for roughly about 30 years, my entire life. I didn't leave. I didn't want to leave. I came back. So my interest is to come and ensure that Jersey Village has this proper guidance from the council, including myself, hopefully, to continue pushing along Jersey Village to make it the place where we want to be. So your judgment for city council position one, it'd be greatly considered.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions for Robert? Thank you for your presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Judy Tidwell. My husband and I have lived in Jersey Village for 11 years, and I'm really excited to be here today applying for this position. Imagine you're looking to buy a home in Houston five to 10 years in the future, and you're considering Jersey Village. You love the character of the homes with the big yards and the gorgeous trees. You've heard amazing things about the quality of the fire and police services. There are small, family-owned businesses, as well as modern upscale businesses full of activity. There are many great events that you can participate in, and you can literally feel the sense of pride that residents take in their city. You want to be a part of this place that you consider the perfect blend between an older, established community and a modern, thriving one, with a sense of community that binds it together. I think we're already working toward this vision for the future, and I'd like to be a part of that. There are a few challenges our city faces in this journey. Our current city officials have already taken important steps toward addressing the flooding issues in Jersey Village, with the various flood mitigation projects underway, and all the research and effort that these have required. I'd like us to continue this effort in the most efficient manner, actively staying on top of all the agencies involved. Maintaining the excellence of our fire and police services is also extremely important. Jersey Village is in a unique and critical position for growth, such that the decisions we make now will be pivotal in determining the manner in which our city develops. I support the vision laid out in the comprehensive plan, and I think strategically positioning ourselves to take advantage of development opportunities is key. We want to attract businesses that will add character and value. I think we're on the right track here, and my goal would be to continue on this path while striving to maintain a healthy balance between forward-thinking vision and fiscal responsibility. Regarding relevant business experience, I've worked in the oil and gas industry for both National Oil, Walvarco, and Cameron Drilling Systems. In these roles, I manage final documentation projects for various types of oil rig equipment. At NOV, I directly manage a team of 11 individuals working toward this goal. During my time there, I also received training in production and inventory management, including master planning of resources. This has familiarized me with resource allocation strategies and methods for addressing obstacles that hinder productivity. These positions both required people management skills, basic knowledge of engineering, and excellent project management skills to juggle many concurrent projects. They also required an ability to work well under pressure, since the company could not receive payment for multimillion-dollar drilling projects until my group delivered. I have a BS in psychology with a minor in philosophy from Texas A&amp;M with a 3.7 GPA. I also have a master's degree in social psychology with a minor in marketing from the University of Houston with a 3.7 GPA. During my time in grad school, I authored and co-authored multiple publications and led many research studies. I learned how to successfully write the grants that were necessary to fund our research. This familiarized me with the grant-writing process and showed me how complex and lengthy it can be. My marketing education and relevant experience with St. Jude Children's Research Hospital has familiarized me with various marketing strategies that I believe will inform and strengthen decisions regarding city development. I also founded and led JV Lights to revive the city's Christmas tradition of having a theme with corresponding yard art for each street. I presented the idea, gathered support, and created the JV Lights Committee, which met regularly. Mayor Justin Ray and Councilman Andrew Mitchum attended these meetings and were both instrumental in the project's success. The project involved finding existing yard art to duplicate, locating vendors, negotiating pricing, setting up an online store for all of the products, finding volunteers to disperse order forms to every residence in Jersey Village, polling residents, advertising with signs and an internet presence, tracking orders, as well as fulfilling the orders accurately. There were a total of about 500 orders, which added $36,000 worth of Christmas yard art to the city of Jersey Village. The success of this project required vision, drive, and a huge investment of time and energy. I see this as proof of how hard I'm willing to work for our city, and I would bring these same qualities with me into the position. I believe that people really can make a difference in their communities through hard work and determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Any questions for Judy?
Judy, the JV Lights project certainly deserves some acknowledgement, and thank you for organizing that. One of the questions I have also is, what are some of the things you've researched to prepare for the possible appointments tonight? What are the city documents have you looked at?
I read the entire comprehensive plan, all 188 pages of it. I read the city charter up until it started getting into the details of the ordinances, because there's a lot of those. I read all of Bobby Born's site, which was very informative. He has a ton of stuff on there, and it's explained a lot to me. It was really helpful. And I've researched some things kind of on the side to fill in information gaps. Like, if I didn't know what something was, I would look it up.
Thank you. Any other questions for Judy? Thanks, Judy.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and consider my application to fill the vacancy when Councilman Mitchum becomes mayor. I have lived in Jersey Village with my wife, Anita, since 2007. We have three children and eight grandchildren, the oldest of which is a senior at Jersey Village High School. Anita and I truly believe that Jersey Village has and always has had the potential to be a thriving community which will exceed the likes of Bel Air and the Heights. Unbeknownst to me, when I moved to Jersey Village into a house that had never flooded, in 2016, I was made aware of the Tax Day flood. My house in Jersey Village did not flood, but having previously owned a home in Woodland Oaks that flooded twice, I was concerned and I have great empathy for the people who flooded, and I'm also concerned about anybody who is potentially in harm's way. That is what prompted me to get involved in Jersey Village, to try to understand about flooding, and to now be coming to you after my run for city council last year to seeking an appointment on city council. Part of this speech is to discuss the qualifications that I have, and I'm going to provide for you a summary of my qualifications, but I'm going to give you very quickly just a brief overview. I have from Southern Methodist University a Bachelor of Business in Administration with an emphasis in entrepreneurship, finance, management, and a minor in sociology. I have a jurist, doctor, a doctor of juris degree from Texas Tech School of Law, where I was on law review and I graduated in the top 15 percent. I'm an admitted lawyer by the State Bar of Texas. I'm admitted in all federal courts in the Northern, Southern, Western, and Eastern Districts of Texas. I'm a board-certified consumer and commercial law attorney. I started with a large downtown firm, and I slowly worked my way into my own firm. Primarily, what I do in my day-to-day operations is solve people's problems. By myself and working with other attorneys, we look at situations, we solve people's problems, whether it's suing an insurance company, dealing with a commercial matter, et cetera. I told you I got involved in Jersey Village politics because of the Tax Day flood. Since then, all of you know who I am because I've attended city council meetings, workshops. I've had discussions with most of you. I've followed up my passion in discussions with Gary Zika, Harris County Flood Control District, Danenbaum Engineering when they were doing the study, Commissioner Cagle. In 2018, y'all were graciously kind enough to appoint me to the tax enforcement refinance zone, and I've served on that board ever since. In January of last year, I ran for city council for the vacancy, and I ran against James in a very contested election. In the process, I've had meetings with Lori Cootie, with the people, Chief Forrester, Mr. Blies, Chief Bits. I've gotten to know y'all. I've organized and hosted in December of last year a meeting with Harris County Flood Control District and with you, Mayor Ray, who attended, so that residents could have a better understanding of flooding issues in Jersey Village. I've met with numerous residents in the process of my campaigning to be a city council member, and most recently, I've attended a lot of the city council meetings, particularly the workshops dealing with the homestead exemptions, the capital improvement plan over a 10-year period, the Golf Course Clubhouse and Convention Center, and the Home Elevation Project Management Group, including meeting with the project manager at that facility and each of the three contractors, and I have a very different impression of their skills and abilities. The long and short of it is, over the last three years, I have literally spent hundreds of hours wanting to be involved and seeking to be involved to help this community. It's genuinely what I want to do. I have talked to y'all. I've listened to residents express their concerns. I've reviewed information obtained from the city. I've tried to understand everything that we can do to improve Jersey Village. I know I can be passionate. I know I can sometimes jump a little too much. You, Mayor Ray, have gavelled me once. I know that for sure. But the fact of the matter is, we all want the same thing. We all want Jersey Village to be a better, better place. The only difference that exists is people's idea, how do we get there? Every situation has the need for different perception, skills, and abilities. Each one of you have your own unique set of skills and abilities, and good decisions for this city comes from the process of a team vetting and considering and making good decisions together. Everybody needs to work together. Successful teams run that. I'm absolutely capable and committed, and I stand before everybody here and say, "I will work with you. I'm committed to work with you." I've demonstrated my commitment unlike any other applicant. I've been in, I ran for city council and put myself out there.
Thank you, Simon. Any questions for Simon?
Simon, I just have one quick question. I think we're all very familiar with your involvement in the community in terms of interaction with city council and pushing some of the issues germane to what city council does. What I'd be interested in knowing a little bit more about, in terms of in your application, you said active in the community. Are there any endeavors that are not related to city government per se that you're involved in in the community in terms of like civic involvement, community involvement, things of that nature?
You know, just with friends and neighbors, and you know, I've participated in some charity events, and I do some other things. I've volunteered in other places, but I'm not a significant part of like a, I don't belong to the Jersey Village Senior Outreach, that sort of thing. And part of it is because I do have a full-time job, although I kind of set that to the side last year in campaigning. I had no idea how significant it is to traipse around and talk to each of the residents, et cetera. So I feel like the hours that I've spent, I'm committed to the city, but to answer your question, no, not specifically with respect to an organization.
Any other questions from council?
Simon, we've had a good opportunity to get to know each other. Last year, we made a land purchase across 290, and it's every citizen's right to be critical of decisions that the council makes and voice those. It should really be held against them for voicing their concern. But I think since then, you've had some changes of heart based of the development across the freeway. Is that true? Have you changed your thoughts as far as the development? Even some of us had reservations before doing it. It was a risk. It was a risk I felt was worth taking, and it paid off.
Yeah, and I think we've got to, we've got to look at exactly where we are. You know, we've already got the Executive Chapter 380 agreement with respect to the development across the street. At the time that the land purchase was made, it was all, it's going to happen, but it hadn't happened. We are in a different situation. We've already made the commitment of $3.1 million on the Golf Course Clubhouse Convention Center. We're talking about an $8 million city hall. We're talking about $153 million infrastructure investment in the tiers with the development. One of the things that y'all need to be aware of is that I'm not unfamiliar with public-private partnerships. I've in fact litigated in the last four years three significant cases involving a town in West Texas, a population of 200,000, and one in the Midwest, a population of 50,000, over the rights and duties and obligations under public-private partnerships. Where we are, we need to move forward. If Oppenheimer's ready to fund, then let's do it. Let's just make sure we protect ourselves in the way we do it. I've seen cities harmed because the lawyers who are drafting those agreements are the lawyers representing the developers. And I can assure you, the agreements I've litigated, I've seen that the developers who are represented by Hunter Andrews Kirth, which is the same attorneys that represent, collaborate in the agreements that we're considering, I've seen where the city's interests have not adequately been protected. That experience is something which I think is separate and distinct and different from each and every one of you. But rest assured, that's just an opinion. That's just my opinion. But I am- Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ray, soon to be Mayor Mitchum, Councilman Singleton, Councilman Wobenhorst, Councilman Holden, Councilman Warren, and City Manager Blyce. I'm Michael Stembridge of Jersey Drive. I've lived in JV for eight and a half years, and I fervently ask for all of your votes for me to the, to fill the Place One vacancy on City Council. I was born in Houston 48 years ago. I graduated Clear Creek High School in the top percentile of my class with a 4.45 GPA in May 1989. I played linebacker, backup receiver, and was a cadet lieutenant colonel in high school GROTC. I was on, I was on the West Point waiting list, but was disqualified physically due to a football injury senior year. I attended Texas A&amp;M University and College Station from August 1989 to July 1990 as a civil engineering major and corp cadets member in Army Unit B2. I graduated Baylor University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science in August 1995. I played midfielder on Baylor lacrosse team. I attended SFA MBA School from September 1995 to December 1995. I attended HCC's Automotive Tech School from January 2010 to May 2010 with a 4.0 GPA. Over the years, I've worked at US Army less than a year in 1996 as an E4 Specialist, 19Kilo in Company B, 2nd Battalion, 81st Army Regiment, 1st Division Old Ironsized. I General Discharge Upgradable to Honorable. I strongly support our troops, I shake their hands, and thank them for their service whenever I see them, because I realize they guarantee our shared democracy and freedom. I also worked at Block Trading, a NASDAQ day trading firm, Hudgens Landscaping, ProMark Research, Voter Consumer Research, and the Gallup Organization as a telephone interviewer. At E-Vision Systems, at E-Vision Systems, I was, I was a business development rep and at Earth Angel Oil's Essential Oil Company, a sales rep and laborer. I've been regular, I've been a regularly attending member of St. Aiden's Episcopal Church for seven years, and I've been a watchdog's dad school volunteer for three years. When we flooded on April 17, 2016, I got down on my knees and prayed, begging God not to let water in the house. Flood sewer water flowed in, like a scene from the movie The Blob. Hit me, hit me in the backyard, pushed me back, and when I was trying to open the fence and turn off the main, the main breaker. It was over my wife's knees as we embarked the rescue boat. Myself, my wife, and child suffer forms of flood PTSD. Whenever it rains, hard or thunders, I pace inside and out, pull weeds. My wife is averse to water, and my daughter screams and cries out in the night until we put a sleeping bag beside our bed for her to sleep on. Tax Day flood took away more than just mere physical property damage. On March 27, 2018, I spoke before Harris County Commissioners Court and Judge Ed Emmett, along with then-Councilman, soon to be Mayor Andrew Mitchum, Councilman James Singleton, and City Manager Austin Blyce. We stated our case for the logical widening of White Oak Bay through Jersey Village. I've actively followed flood mitigation news policy and have attended and spoken at City Council since the flood. I strongly support passing homestead exemption expansion, and I see local new and prospective business as essential to making it a reality for residents. I also support the city's ongoing comprehensive flood mitigation, economic development, and family-friendly amenities. Everyone should have their right to their own opinion, but I categorically do not favor mere flood prevention methods substituted for comprehensive, long-term flood mitigation projects, elevations, buyouts, and re-dos. I support our bright city manager's success in applying for grants and working smoothly in tandem with other levels of government on long-term flood mitigation. I feel my appointment for this vacancy would be pragmatic and symbolic for the city and people of Jersey Village. Keenly appointing yet another Jersey Village flutter onto Council would mean even more symbolic representation for Jersey Village flutters. I vow to represent all people of Jersey Village equally. My mission objective here is to be of maximum service to Jersey Village, Mayor Mitchum, my Council colleagues, and my City Manager. I love helping people, and I'd be a team player on Council, seeking to bring unity, compromise, and harmony wherever there's division, confusion, or disagreement. Ultimately, this is your decision today. I thank you all for listening to me objectively with open hearts and minds, and I fervently and sincerely ask you all to vote for me to fill Place One on City Council. Have a stellar evening, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael Stembridge? Very good. Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Next applicant, Michael Drew Watson.
I'm Drew Watson, and I'm a proud 15-year resident of Jersey Village. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor-elect Mitchum and Councilmembers Warren and Holden on your elections this past weekend. City councilors, fellow applicants, residents of Jersey Village, thank you for this opportunity to address my qualifications and state why I want to become a member of City Council. Excuse me. Growing up in Houston, I knew of Jersey Village. I had friends that lived here. But once one lives here, you get a different perspective on what it's like. In 2004, I took on two life-altering undertakings. I married my wife, and I moved to Jersey Village. I love both even more today than I did then. I do not take this application lightly. I've done my due diligence in this decision. I've discussed the service and sacrifices with my family, and I've also spoken with fellow residents, and as well as those who formerly and currently serve on this Council. By both statute and personal experience, I am qualified to serve on City Council. I have the experience, skills, commitment to service, and dedication that this position requires. For more than 20 years, I've worked with global companies and small businesses, along the way, working on both teams and independently. I've had to collaborate with others, plan roadmaps, work on multimillion-dollar budgets, and hire and fire employees. I've served professionally as a consultant, business analyst, and people leader. To summarize my roles, I'm a decision-maker and problem solver. I understand the questions to ask, I can analyze information, articulately state my position, and defend it, and I know when and how to compromise. I know how to serve others and to communicate. In our community, I've been a volunteer on two Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Committees, and I've volunteered in several activities in the area in support of my children, including youth sports and Cub Scouts. Recently, you, as members of City Council, appointed me to serve on the Tax Incremental Reinvestment Zone Board in service of Jersey Village. I have the experience, service, and dedication, and the desire to apply these traits as a member of City Council. I agree with the growth-oriented posture the city leadership has established over the past few years, and I want to see it continue. I want to help Jersey Village become the most desired place to live, to do business, to shop. I aspire to make this the best mu- big word, municipality to which to work for. I believe the best days as a city are ahead of us. My wife and I chose Jersey Village because of the community here, because of the small-town feel. We need to continue to foster this culture and position ourselves for future growth. Recent city decisions have authorized such, such things recommended in the comprehensive plans, such as better signage, a splash pad, and the dog park. The city regularly hosts great special events. Our city broadcasts Council meetings on YouTube. This adapts to today's modern lifestyle and promotes transparency. These things help enrich our community and attract us to new residents. Actions such as the development of Village Crossing and the new Golf Course Clubhouse will help bring additional sales tax dollars, spur other development, and create additional outside interest in our city. We need to ensure that these projects are successful by holding the contractors and developers accountable to their agreements. Our public services are a huge asset to this community. We need to make sure our police and fire departments and other city workers have the equipment, resources, manpower, and workspaces they need to continue or even improve their current level of service to our... By doing all this, we can ensure, we can retain and attract top talent. Several times since I've moved here, my friends and neighbors have suffered through flooding. We live in southeast Texas, so our region will always have rainfall and too much water to handle. The city must continue to work with Harris County, the Flood Control District, FEMA, on projects and grants that help mitigate this economic and emotional impact of flooding in our community. As a member of Council, I'd like to work collaboratively with other members.
Mayor, that's time. That's time, Drew. Any questions for Michael Drew Watson? Thank you for the presentation. Last applicant I have is Joe Pennington.
I am blown away by the quality of the resi... I've known Jersey Village has been an amazing place, but tonight's presentation by the fellow citizens here is amazing. We have just got so much talent here that the future of our city is extremely bright. I've been here since 96, and have worked as a resident here since 96, and, and worked in the political system here as a precinct chairman since, well, for 20 years now. And it, it is really encouraging to see government at its finest at the local level. I've been involved in government at the state, county, and local level. In my 42 years in law enforcement, I have seen all things government, good and bad. So, it is an amazing story here in Jersey Village, and I want to thank y'all for this opportunity for appointment tonight, and I'm going to yield the remaining, remaining time I have to whoever appropriately needs it.
Any questions for Joe?
Joe, I was just, because everyone else kind of had it very clearly laid out on here, did you want to describe a little bit, other than government-related, any community involvement you've had, and organizations, civic groups, anything of that sort?
In my work in law enforcement, I have had considerable community involvement in collaboration and problem-solving in the community. Included also in the state-level law enforcement, I, I was a commissioner with the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement for nine years, and that was a similar body to a City Council where we oversaw, nine of us oversaw, an executive director. But in those nine years, I was able to learn more about the state of Texas than I ever knew before because of my understanding of all the different varieties of law enforcement and their needs, especially to, in, throughout the state. But in terms of, and then also in the community work, I've, I've done work with the two chambers of commerce in our area, the Cyfair Chamber and the Northwest Chamber, in my work in law enforcement at the Houston Police Department. In addition to that, I worked with the district attorneys, I was on assignment to the district attorney's office as the Policy Procedure and Protocol Liaison Officer, and in that role, I also worked in the community and worked a considerable amount in neighborhoods that were very challenged with their crime issues. And so, we came up with solutions in that regard. I'm a graduate of the Leadership North Houston Program, which is a collaboration between Lone Star Community College and the regional chambers of commerce from I-45 West. So, those are, and then, of course, all the church activities that I'm involved in, but those are some of the highlights.
Any other questions for Joe?
Yeah, Joe, since we haven't met and talked about anything, and you've had sort of a short speech here, I'm just wondering, of the issues going on in Jersey Village, where you stand, or is there anything you're opposed to, or have you got any agenda items you would target if you were to get this seat?
I would focus on public safety, of course, as government's first responsibility. And we have, we've had such outstanding public safety services here in the village, and it's hard to improve on what we have in that regard. Of course, after that, then flooding is a major, major consideration, and that would be my, my next prioritization. After that, then, of course, our economic development, which is coming with our civic center, our city, our village center, and then the, also, the comprehensive development plan. It's, it's just such an exciting time in Jersey Village that I want to be a part of that, and so that's why I applied to be a Councilmember. But it is extremely gratifying, I guess, to see how Jersey Village is like the penultimate city in, in terms of what we've accomplished here and we've come so far. As, I was on the Board of Adjustments here for a number of years, then I had to leave because of work conflicts, but I'm back now on the Board of Adjustment, so that's another community service job that I've taken on and volunteered for here in Jersey Village. And that is a tremendous opportunity and responsibility there, too, so.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That will conclude our presentations this evening. Council, on our agenda this evening, we have the ability to go into executive session. Do any Councilmembers want to convene executive session this evening? Seeing none, we will forego executive session, we'll move directly into Item F1. Conduct possible follow-up questioning of applicants. Consider Resolution Number 2019-19, making an appointment to fill the vacancy of City Councilmember Place One, effective upon the position becoming vacant when Councilmember Mitchum is sworn in as mayor, which is anticipated to be on or about May 13, 2019, acknowledging the position will be filled by election at the next city, city general election. Councilmembers, we've had presentations, we've, we've also had information emailed to us as part of an application packet. I'll now open it up at the floor at this time for Councilmembers to discuss the application for Position One on Jersey Village City Council. The floor is open, Councilmembers.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to start out, and, and I will, I agree with Joe, the presentations were phenomenal, much, much more so than what I had expected. I was nervous for each of you. I went through that process one time, and it was terrifying, and reliving it seven times did not help. So, I am, I am still nervous for each of you. I wanted to go through, these, these decisions are difficult because it's not black and white. There's just so much gray area involved in this, but, but I, but I actually put to paper my process to, to kind of explain how I will reach a decision. First of all, this is by a vote of Council. If, if for some reason, the, the person that we appoint is not the person that you favor, you'll have an opportunity to correct that situation in 12 months. You can affirm or correct. So, this is not a permanent, it's not a Supreme Court appointment. This is 12 months. And I would encourage each of you that stood up this evening, that have that passion, that interest in Jersey Village, to get involved. That's the kind of people we need. We, we need your input, you know, and, and we'll all be gone in a few years, so please get involved. But anyways, let me go through the criteria, and I don't mean to drag it on, but I, I kind of went through a filtering process. A person must be knowledgeable, competent, and trustworthy. A person must have the demeanor to make difficult decisions in the face of opposition. Must have communication skills to articulate and debate issues. Unbiased and able to make decisions based on the merit of the content. Provide a meaningful contribution to the process. Basic aptitude and understanding of municipal government, and a desire to serve beyond the appointment that we're going to make this evening, meaning that they have a desire to go beyond the 12 months and run an election and seek votes and seek to support the public. That was the first. And I will say that, that I feel like everyone met that criteria. The second criteria is I have to feel comfortable that the person that, that I choose to appoint shares my value, my visions, and my outlook for Jersey Village. That's really important. The third is that the person we appoint shares the values, the vision, and the outlook of the person we're replacing. The voters put it, put Andrew in this position. Andrew has chosen to run for mayor. That opinion and those votes are still valid. And so, I do look at Andrew and I say, what, you know, what is his vision? What's his outlook for Jersey Village? And does the person that we appoint mirror those? That filters some people out. One other perspective, I was kind of, I've been on Council for 13 of the last 18 years, and I think a lot, some of you may say that's 13 years too many. But I went down and made a list. We've had 23 people on City Council, including myself. I've served with 19 of them, actually 20. So, there's only three people in the last 18 years that I have not served with. So, when I, when I look to make my decision, the qualifications are there, the perspective, the outlook, everything is there with each of you. Sometimes it comes down to a gut feeling. And unfortunately, I think tonight will be a gut feeling decision. So, that's basically the criteria I used and will use this evening. I thank each of you for coming out. I thank you for your presentations. I know how agonizing it is. That's it.
Welcome to Jersey Village's version of the game Survivor. I mean, yeah, there's only going to be one winner, but there's not going to be a million dollars. Sorry.
dollars. Sorry.
If I could make one more comment. Aside from the presentations this evening, several, more than several of the candidates provided us, we had one-on-one conversations, they provided written information. They provide us, there's a lot more to this than what you've seen this evening. Although this was an important part, there's, there's a lot more to this that each of these candidates have presented. So anyways.
This is a very tough decision. I've had the opportunity to talk to most of the applicants offline. Some of them I've known for several years now. I'll agree with some of my colleagues who've gone out and said, this is a council decision. However, I put a lot of weight in the citizens that contact me and, and voiced their opinion. And their opinion narrows it down to two people. I would like to see someone who shares our views. I also think that there's weight in diversity. I also put a lot of weight in whether or not you've run your own campaign before, because having gone through that, there is a lot more that you learn along the way, and you learn that your views are maybe not shared with the rest of the city. So it was a very, very difficult decision, and one that surprised me in the end. That's all my comments.
I've got to agree with a lot of what Greg said, and I agree with what James has said as well, and Gary. You know, it's no surprise that we all kind of share a big, big picture, similar vision, because we're all elected by the same people. If we were up here having completely opposite views of the city, it would be strange, because we were elected presumably by the same people. The, one thing that Greg pointed out that I found very interesting is the idea of, because there's been a lot of talk about votes and who got what votes and during what elections. And Greg pointed out something very important. The term that's being filled is an unexpired term of Andrew Mitchum. And the voter selected Andrew Mitchum. He won that election. Won a couple of them. And so I, I think that's a very important point, to look to the sorts of things that Andrew stands for and that he's articulated and that has gotten him elected through the process. In addition to what a lot, what a lot of the people have mentioned, for me, again, public input was a big part of the process. I heard from over 130 different people. Now granted, that's not nearly as many people as would vote in an election. But I did get a very good sense, like James mentioned, that there were two people that really had the bulk of the support. And for me, at that point, what it boils down, and they had virtually the exact level of support. At that point, a big thing that's always been a, a big part for me to evaluate people running for office has been their involvement in the community, and their involvement particularly in charity work and civic work, you know, things where it's not about government, it's about people. It's about making this place better for kids, for seniors, for people who, you know, need a little bit of help. And that sometimes the best way to help those people is not government, but instead is one neighbor helping another, because I think that's a far more effective way to help people than through government. But sometimes government is necessary, maybe less so than we think at times. And so for me, an issue of service to your fellow man is a big factor for me, and I think that ultimately will wind up, for me, being the deciding factor for me tonight.
Well, I just wanted to sort of echo what Joe said. We have a really great group of applicants, and I was not expecting that. So I was actually appointed to council, that's how I got on council. I was re-elected in an actual election, but when I first got on council, it was me and Joyce Berube, and that was it. And I stutter, and so public speaking is really difficult for me. And so for everybody who got up and had the guts to, to speak, it's really great to see. And so I want to encourage, you know, like we mentioned, you can only pick one winner tonight. And I just want to encourage everyone who's not chosen, make sure you stay involved. We have a lot about to happen in Jersey Village. We've spent many years planning the comprehensive plan, our long-term flood mitigation strategy. All of these things are starting to come to a point where we have to execute on them and make them happen. So we really need talented people like you. Everyone who got up to speak today was, was really fantastic, and it gave me a really great feeling. So please, please, please stay involved. My decision-making process in this was a little bit easier because it's my vacant seat that we're appointing for, and I kind of know, the only person who knows me better is my wife. And, but she can't make that decision tonight. I'm making that decision tonight. And what I've championed, what I've, what I've sacrificed for, what I've, what I've come to council to serve for is ultimately going to be the decision, you know, who mirrors, who is most closely walking in the same footsteps that I, that I did. And it mirrors a lot of what Greg, Greg mentioned. Is this person qualified? Are they passionate about our city? Are they passionate about organizations in our city? You know, so the other thing is, this is not actually a popularity contest. The city charter puts it into the hands of council. And that's, that's what we're going to do. We are going, in my opinion, we should be appointing a person who's going to fill the unexpired term of the person that we're replacing. So that's kind of where, where my decision-making process went. And, but honestly, my whole goal was, and my whole tenure on council is, and my civic involvement, just in, in the city in general, is to get people involved. We have this upward momentum in the city, and we need to keep it going. And we can only keep that going if everyone is, if these talented people who spoke tonight are continuously involved positively. So stay positive, and please, please stay involved. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, everybody, for your applications. At this time, does any council member have any other comments or questions? Okay. As part of the appointment process, council will conduct a roll call vote at this time. Each member of council will have an opportunity to vote for any one of the applicants who made a presentation. I will now call upon each council member by name to take a roll call vote. Once your name is called, please state the name of the applicant of your choice. Councilmember Mitchum, state your applicant.
Drew Wasson.
Councilmember Holden.
Drew Wasson.
Councilmember Warren.
It's my honor to say Drew Wasson.
Councilmember Singleton.
Fortunately, I only have one vote. Simon Hughes.
Councilmember Ruben Horst.
Judy Tedwell.
Applicant Michael Drew Wasson has received a majority of three votes. With no additional voting necessary, is there a motion to approve resolution number 2019-19, appointing Michael Drew Wasson to fill the vacancy of City Councilmember Place One, effective upon the position becoming vacant when Councilmember Mitchum is sworn in as mayor, which is anticipated to be on or about Monday, May 13th, 2019, acknowledging that the position shall be filled by election at the next city general election. Just make a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. There's been a motion second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor oppose, and the abstentions motion carries. Congratulations. Item two on our agenda, discuss and take appropriate action, update on the golf course, clubhouse, and convention center project. Faro, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just really quickly, during February's regularly scheduled council meeting, convention center and clubhouse layout design was approved and substantially presented, as substantially presented. Since that time, staff's been working with PGAL to complete the interior designs and material selection. We've had multiple meetings with PGAL over the past, past few months and have decided, I have discussed various options in regards to the interior materials. In the handout provided, we've included an updated site plan and interior materials list. Staff feels that these materials selected will create an upscale feel to the facility, keep maintenance to a minimum, and stay in line with our budget. I really just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been discussing with PGAL in regards to the clubhouse and convention center. If you look on page number two, it's just an updated layout. Basically, everything that we've already presented to you before, with, with the minor changes that we've all made, or that we've made through y'all's comments. Page three and page four is the site plan. And then the rest of it goes into the materials listing of, and materials of what we'll be using for the interior of the facility. You can see some of that stuff is, it looks like wood flooring. A lot of it's slick proof, or slip resistant, should I say, for, for the golfers. We definitely don't want them to, to slip and fall on anything with their cleats. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and let me know. Let me know your thoughts.
All right. Any questions for Jason? Any questions for Jason from members of the city council?
Hey, Jason, looking at the floor plan, I see we finally, I assume the commercial kitchen finally got its attention from the kitchen layout expert that PGAL had. It looks much more orderly now, but the one thing I'm noticing is that the dry goods storage is suddenly gone. I didn't know if they decided on a different solution.
No, we were just trying to, trying to find some room for a little bit of everything. And I think it's, it's really just trying to, to put it all with the freezer and the storage space that we have, kind of back-to-back right here on the, on the bottom portion of the, of the restaurant, if you will.
Okay. I mean, my only comment would be just, I'm sure they probably know a lot more about laying out kitchens than I do. But, you know, yeah, I just thought that was notable, that it was suddenly had been in every floor plan and now is gone. I was hoping maybe there's a different solution. So if we just check on that, you know, yeah.
Yes, most definitely. I can say that we're about 75% through the construction documents, so there's still definitely some, some tweaks or suggestions that we can make if needed.
Has the dollar amount changed?
No, sir.
A question about the, it looks like you're, you're going into finishes and appointments and things like that. In terms of finishes, who's initiating that process?
PGAL has an interior designer that we've been working with. She's basically giving us a palette to work with, and then we're giving them the suggestions from what we see off that palette. She's taking it back, making sure that it's going to be worth our while when it comes to the budget, and make sure that it's under budget. And that's basically where we're, where we're going with interior.
Just as a, an initial, an initial overview, some of the finishes look traditional. And you certainly shouldn't be contemporary, but at the same time, I, I think you need to be conscious of, of making sure that it's appealing on the day you open and not outdated, or doesn't have a dated look, that it's a timeless look. And, and I would question some of, a few of these finishes. So if this is the point at which that, those decisions are made, I think, I think some, some more insight in that would be helpful to us.
Hey, Greg, could you, if you've got, I'm actually curious as to what finishes you're particularly looking at. Give us some, give us some thought, give us some background of what you're thinking here.
Looking at porcelain wood tile flooring, which is fine, but it, it's almost like a parquet look, if I'm looking at it correctly. I may be looking at it incorrectly, but, but a, but a parquet style, and, and that might be, better pictures might be helpful, but.
Is that the porcelain wood tile flooring you're looking at, the entrance and entryway?
Page five. And I'm, you know, they're, they're the experts. I'm sure that they know what they're doing, but I don't want to assume.
Right. Yeah, I can say that we, we did talk with them about that traditional, the traditional look and trying to stay with that feel, obviously not try to keep it so traditional to where it's outdated in 10 years. And the pictures are a little funny when, when they're small like that. Same thing with the carpet.
Yeah. Traditional's fine, but timeless is better.
Yeah, I think, I was sitting over here trying to figure out how to word it correctly, and Greg just hit it right on the nails where I was going with this. This is a little bit more traditional than what I was expecting. I'm kind of surprised they went with gold. I thought gold was going out. But I'm not an interior designer, so.
You've got no pictures of the furnishings for the eating areas?
No, sir. This was the only thing that was provided to us from PGAL.
Some of those furnishings, chairs and that type of thing have not yet been picked out.
I will say, the, Lori will be happy to mention this. The carpet does look a little strange, particularly, I don't know if the furniture is supposed to be part of the design, or if that's just there as an example and not really being considered as part of the matchup with the carpet. But I think I get what they were trying to do. It looks sort of like it's inspired by sort of Scottish tartan kind of look, but instead it kind of, kind of looks like a bit of a 70s-type motif, which may not be bad if well-done, but I don't know that this quite gets there.
Are you speaking about the clubhouse, the pro shop area?
Where it says, the design says carpet pattern. There are two green chairs on sort of a blue, sorry, page, yeah, six, yeah, 17 of their paging. But yeah, where it says carpet one shows sort of a close-up of the carpet square, and then below that shows some green chairs and a small table, and then the carpet actually in use.
Right.
It looks a little strange in terms of the blue and the orange and the green.
I, I would agree with you. And on the flip side, when you have a larger, when you actually see it in a larger scale, it looks a lot better. I think what they were trying to do is really break up the pattern with carpet one with the carpet two, and trying to make it look similar to what you see in the picture with those two chairs. What we're doing also with the color, we're trying to really keep with the color scheme that we had from Brightbox, with the, with the design and the logo and all of that. I believe they had like a burnt orange color, if I'm not mistaken.
I will say, I do like the trim work. I mean, I think a lot of this is very good in terms of the crown molding, the trim work. I think that's all in the right direction. I like the wood flooring, but I have to agree with Greg. Like, if you look at the picture where it says corridor concept, you can kind of see the wood flooring and its full pattern. And at least from here, it does have kind of a parquet look. So it does look pretty dated there.
Okay.
Yeah, good feedback, council. I like the use of the term timeless. The furniture that's in that picture, is that just a representative picture of furniture?
That, that's just, yes, sir.
Okay. Just making sure.
I would take those chairs. What's wrong with you people?
You wouldn't have wanted to see the first draft.
Well, and Jason, and let me just can recommend that you keep council involved in this, because the decor and the atmosphere of this clubhouse is extremely important. And so we want to make sure we nail this thing right. And I know a number of the council members have a good eye for design and a good eye for decorating. So I appreciate you guys continuing to bring this before council, and I would recommend that you continue to keep council involved in this decision, as we can all come to a decision together for a just bang-up clubhouse. This is very, very important. For everybody in attendance, Jason, would you mind giving us an update on where we are in the process, as far as the design, and then kind of a little bit of the timeline of what we're looking for, as far as construction and everything that goes along with that?
Sure. So as I previously mentioned, we just received 75% construction documents from PGAL. That was late, it was early last week. We had a meeting with city staff, and we gathered notes and comments from city staff in regards to those 75% construction documents, sent that information over to PGAL, and they're working on that currently. As far as the timeline, we're really pushing them to try to get this completed sooner rather than later. So we're looking at going out for our first publication on May the 15th to go out for bid, followed up with the second publication the 22nd. So if everything works out the way that we had hoped, we're, we're planning on bringing a contractor or somebody back to you in June, and then hopefully we'll be able to have them start work within, you know, the next 30 days or so. So sometime in July, we're looking at having some shovels in the ground with roughly nine to 10 months' worth of construction. So we're looking at possibly April to May of next year to have it completed.
Did I hear right, it was April or May of 2020?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a quick, that's quick.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason or staff on this? Jason, thank you very much for bringing this update. And like I said, please continue to keep everybody updated on the development of this golf course clubhouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Does anybody else have any questions on item two of the golf course clubhouse and convention center project? Very good. Thank you, councilmen, for your attendance tonight. Thank you for your work. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance this evening. Thank you very much, applicants. We really appreciate your desire to serve our community, and we look forward to... We really appreciate your desire to serve our community, and we look forward to continuing to work with you on future endeavors. Everybody, thank you very much, your attendance, meeting adjourned.